I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Madam Honor, would you do us the honor?
No, wait a minute, I'll do the agenda first. Do we have any conflicts of interest with the agenda as it's written? About that, do we have any objections to it? None or stand is approved? Madam Honor, now would you read us the minutes from last meeting? Nice and short one this time.
Yeah. October tenth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine A M. with Ty Rosberg, Chairman, Presiding Members, President, were Schultz, Dozar, Grosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The Board approved Sheriff's Quarterly Report, July twenty-three to September twenty-three. The Board approved Recorder's Quarterly Report for July twenty-three through September twenty-three. The Board approved the resignation of Lisa Gallagher, Driver's License, First Deputy, Treasurer's Office. Board approved change of wage for Tammy Clinker, Driver's License, Supervisor, Treasurer's Office. The Board approved change of wage for Seth Weiss, Chief Deputy Assessor's Office. Board approved change of wage for Madison Jacobson, Deputy Assessor's Office. The, a motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozar, to approve amendment to Iowa D O T Crawford County Secondary Road five-year program for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hayden, to approve the purchase of twenty-five thousand ton of maintenance gravel from Halat Materials from the Anthem Wright pit at a price of nine dollars per ton. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozar, to approve an easement for City of Manila. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned it ten twenty-eight A M. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty P M. Proceeding the next meeting.
Do we have any objections or additions or corrections to the agenda? Here in United, it's standing approved as red. Get some blue out of here.
Thank you.
You can now.
Good, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Hayden, would you, well, I just went first this morning.
All right, well, I will try to keep it short. We had our Region twelve meeting on Thursday night. Relatively short compared to most of those meetings. Just kind of go through the things that stuck out. And one of the things that makes me not very happy is that the down payment assistance programs that we've always used for our smaller communities to be able to hang up with both rehabilitation and down payment. At the end of the year, they're not running these programs anymore. Once these are done, there'll be no more. So I think we're going to miss those programs in our smaller communities.
Because they're running out of money.
Just, yeah, they just don't, they just have decided to do away with those programs. And they've been so successful. You know, in the smaller communities, when they applied for them to help rehab and help people buy homes that normally couldn't. So that's not good. One of the questions that I'm trying to find out is on Thursdays in Carroll, are transit services take the elderly shopping? And I'm just trying to find out why, why don't we do that in Dennis? It would be such a nice benefit for us to have the elderly one day a week, the transit would come by, pick them up and take them. It runs through Hy-Vee, it's a Hy-Vee route. So, you know anything about that, Dave? There's a lot of discussion about it.
I guess ask Madam Honor.
Yeah, maybe see if we can do that. Otherwise, it was a pretty, just a budget and pass this around so you can kind of see where we're at. They did get that loan for the meet and full fully done and discussed, you know, how that's all gonna, gonna go, but otherwise, pretty routine.
That then forward in Illinois.
Yep, and they talked about how that's gonna be these boxes and it's going to have a kind of decision. So that was good.
It's funny that you see, as they lost their contract on subway. What is subway doing? The exact same thing where they're processing all their sandwiches without anybody touching them.
Yeah, that's a longer shelf life and, although the loans in Illinois is gonna profit the businesses in Iowa, so it was a good decision. Well, the center is starting to get some improvements done. We had a roll call vote over the week that those railings are really wobbly. And so we made the decision to go ahead and have Joe's welding come up and weld them now before she paints them, just to kind of.
Did you mean city center?
City center, what'd I say?
Well, the center.
I was close.
Sorry, no, yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure. Like, they got railings already?
That's exactly.
No problem. No, you're fine. I just wanted to verify.
They've got the water turned on and she's washing all of the surfaces down just so the paint will stick a little bit better. And then she's finding areas that need some improvement and she's letting the Board know about it. They're letting us know and we're kind of voting to go ahead and just get everything done. Why paint it if it's already wobbly and so Joe's is gonna go up? On the eighteenth, she'll be having the tally handler come and she'll be getting that north side done or the south side done so that we can get that completely finished. I need to follow up with treasures to see if they have a date for the concrete. They kind of haven't really given us the time. And I don't want them to push that off till next year. I'd like to get it done as soon as possible. So once she gets that painting done and I'm sure that it's all clear and ready for them to go, I'll try to get a date on that. Otherwise, it was a relatively slow meeting week. We'll have our mental health, with mental health next week. So I know there's gonna be some changes, but I'm waiting for that agenda to come out before I tell you a little bit more about the changes coming forward. Not sure if they're good or bad, but I need to kind of talk to Dawn and Allen. That's about it. Short and sweet.
Well, okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Schultz, what do you have for us this morning?
Oh, let's see. I can hear something from last Thursday or Friday. I don't think so. We were here yesterday, though. My days are kind of all knotted together here.
Welcome to the park, Paul Harvick.
Yeah, yeah. You asked me what day it was. I just barely remember yesterday about ten o'clock and then well, he's somewhere at ten thirty. Anyways, we got yesterday's meeting, Friday, and Ty and I met with Duane Boss and Duane, our Greg Miller, and Duane are here. We kind of went over this action item for later. And Colin was here as well to make sure the contract was all up to snuff for Elmar Phase Two purchase. But like, it's Friday, probably been just nothing much going on, nothing like all the farmers are busy or then we had some rain, so I think they were all asleep. Like these days.
No.
Catching up. Yep. Yeah, that or fixing, one or the other.
Fixing.
Fixing and sleeping.
Little team building, things like that.
Maybe a county general safety meeting out in the shop. That's about all I had, short and sweet.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Dozer.
I don't have anything. We have West Central Community Action Meeting tonight, so maybe next week.
Any word, Craig, on the breakdown?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mulbauer?
Oh, mine was pretty short and sweet as well. Jean actually covered Region Twelve for me because I take my daughter to go to Dune's, do a special for a broken arm. But she has to read it tomorrow and play it. But I did, Rick, one second, we talked about packaging vehicles together, three hundred and twelve and mass order and our county's needs. And he said it's not a savings because they do not get any governmental discounts, so. Except just one word.
Oh.
And who's that?
Shut that down. Good idea, he said, but you get a better deal on your own than you would with us coming together because we're not technically, we may be a subsidiary of a government agency, government agency themselves. Was what he brought up. I did meet with Sean Conkey and Henry. I'm gonna dig out a ditch on Downery Road, one of my farms, and going to kind of go over it this morning. So that them on the way up here. They continue to move forward with projects and as long as the weather's holding out. That's about all I got.
You guys are just kind of brief today, aren't you? Jean, are you sick or? That might be good, huh? Well, I guess.
They need to get going on that concrete, though, or days apart concrete or not.
I'm gonna say ain't like November third, everybody's dropping that date.
I just wanted to make sure that she was done on the side so that there would be no conflicts that they wanted to come. And so the eighteenth is when she's gonna get started. And then they can see that that's done and there's no reason not to get started. So I'll go down if it's, yeah, once I see.
I mean, you can pour it to the first of December, but you gotta take a lot of precautions, cover it and keep them armed and stuff.
I know all about that.
Yeah, Adam should know all about.
Yeah, bring a blanket in and warm it up, I guess.
And I don't, you know, I don't hear as fast as it would, I think, visually.
Winter attitude.
We had a poor last Wednesday and we were there until eleven thirty yet, trying to finish it.
Oh, I seen that on Facebook.
What are you doing?
Oh, working for my wife.
Oh, nice.
Thank God. The fire department brought a truck out with a lot of lights on because we needed it.
Okay.
Pretty dark though, after about eight, eight thirty.
Got floodlights if you need them.
Well, they offered it. Ran over.
Yeah.
Firemen, good men. Okay, well, I will try to eat up some time here. We'll, the Raycom meeting, I thought that went pretty well. We solved all the issues that our county attorney had on that, so that contract should go pretty efficient. Yesterday in the afternoon, I had my Naco AG. I'm on the, one committee I'm on there. It's a rural EMS working group. And they had a long discussion and they had I can't remember the acronyms for sure, but the one lady was the Presiding President of the National Association for Emergency Management. And then the other speaker, he was a past president of like county ambulance associations, whether they're county level or privates, you know? So I mean, even like that, our hospital would be a member or something like that, I assume. And obviously, these are two of the groups that are fighting hardest to help, help with the essential, essential services and all that type of stuff to get that through. And I think one of the things that when they found out we'd established this group through Naco, they were looking for an ally from the counties of the, the Counties of America. So I think we'll probably lend our voice to what they're up to because they really had some, excuse me, they really had some interesting takes as bad as we thought we had this. There's, there's like one, I mean, two hour sometimes is the best service that they'll have in some of these counties like West Virginia and some places out in the mountain country. Two hours before you'll have an ambulance at your door. You know, and, and then everybody is struggling with the E M T. You know, getting people, enough people. And then I did a little bit of talking yesterday after the meeting and sounds like our hospital's going, losing a couple paramedics again. And so that could put us strained. I mean, thankfully, you got the team up there and tire and put together an ambulance section, but still, all things being equal, that was one of the things. What's the gal from Deloitte? It's Ian.
Irene?
Who?
Deloitte or kind of?
Irene?
No, from Deloitte.
Oh, Deloitte. No, being a Rachel bones.
Not Rachel. Anyway, I ran into her out of Walmart afterwards.
Green, lasted green.
Oh, that worked out.
Yeah.
Well, in any event, I talked to her out there and we got to discussing it. And she said that she was just thankful that this fire department actually her training her. She said, I've never been home before to do that. And you know, I know the hospital did that. And this is one of the things they talked about. And as they're sitting, you're, you're listening to that. You know, a lot of these people have to take time off from work to go to this training. And I mean, to me, it's something to fight with on a national level. To me, I, at least as I'm sitting there listening, maybe that's something that you need to think about is at least pay these people something while they're doing. I mean, a lot of these are younger females. You know, so somebody's got to watch kids if, if dad's out working and, you know, I mean, I think they mostly do them in the evening, don't they? Kind of the E M D ten or?
Yeah, well, yeah, they're probably willing to work with whatever the majority of the group wants.
Yeah. But I just think that, you know, I mean, as far as the national I don't know that we're at crisis level yet, but we're awful damn close, I'd say.
Yeah, I would.
You know?
I'm real high over a crisis level.
Yeah, and I mean.
You may as well show up.
Well, and that's just it. And if you look at, I don't know that we're as bad as some of them other ones. I mean, at least we're not two hours away from even Manila could be that.
Right.
Iron faster than two hours, you know? So I don't know, I just, I was, it was kind of alarming and I was kind of glad I got on this group. You know, I mean, just, I got on it more out of curiosity. It was one of them volunteer groups and I thought it was part of my rural economic development group is what it was part of. So I just got on it and I sit there and listen mostly. There's a lot of subject matter experts and they're a lot sharper than I am on the subject. But uh, yeah, the, the first lady, she was Susan, Susan Bailey, N A E M T. National Association of A M Ts. She's, they were talking about being able to bill more. We've talked about it even here in this, in this room. Tip and tad. Transport. Any idea, Ted? Tab was transport to an alternate destination. I know that. But getting paid for these things, a lot of our that tip is when you, you know, like when you get the ambulance gets there and then somebody doesn't want to get taken to the hospital and then they don't get compensated for that. So that's, that was one of the things. That's what that tip stands for. I can't remember the acronym altogether. But they were talking fast, so I didn't have time to hide it out. But I just thought that was pretty darn interesting that that's something that everybody's saying that is a problem. So, I mean, even hospitals that are paid services will get out there and they can't build that on anything, you know?
They're built to, they refuse transport.
Yeah, can't build insurance. I do know, that was part of the discussion and I actually knew about it before that because it was a V A thing and it was on our Military Affairs Committee. We actually talked about that when I had that meeting. Actually, that might have been last week after this meeting. I'll have to look through it. But the V A was gonna start using Medicaid's payback for anything medical. And that's one of the reasons, and I think they'd already started, because I think that was one of the reasons that out here, Aaron and them don't take veterans for the emergency room. You know, they won't take the V A coverage, you gotta pay. And because they get paid on Medicaid or whatever you want to say. Or not at all. And so it's made them hesitant about taking veterans. So I mean, that's, that's, I know on the Military Affairs Committee, that's been a big, a big issue to get solved with the V A. But then these guys talked about it too, when they transport a veteran, their insurance is obviously through the V A and the V A is paying them that way as well. So they're, they're, that's another thing there. They were fighting with, so then the V A stopped that. They said, well, we'll pay on I don't remember what, what it is, but it's, it's not, you guys are insurance people, you probably know more about that than I do. But, you know, they're trying to go back to what they originally did or they're, they are gonna stay with what they originally had now because they've been getting so much feedback, you know, negative feedback. So anyway, that was a pretty interesting, I mean, and I was just listening to these two talk mostly about their issues. The Sean, he was from actually down in Louisiana. And he's got his own ambulance service, obviously. That's that's the ambulance, American Ambulance Association, the triple A. And they talk mostly about where their shortcomings are, you know, as far as personnel. And then I don't know, didn't, I didn't hear anybody really complaining much about cost of rigs or anything like that, but I'm sure that's an issue. It's just when you don't have people to man the equipment, it doesn't matter how much it costs, you can hire anybody to run it. So I don't, they weren't complaining much about that. But I mean, I think all in all, you know, we've talked about it at length about the fire services number shrinking and the volunteer services in general. I'm trying to, as I'm, I'm kind of trying to drag my feet here and remember the number they used. How much money every year volunteer services in Amer- and it's in the Bs. It's in the billions, not the millions, how much they, that saves the nation every year, like three billion dollars every year. Just don't quote me on that. I'm trying to draw that off memory, but I'm having a little trouble. But I mean, it was a big number. I mean, as far as dollars it would cost if everybody was out there was full, if, if every, every county had to have full-time service. I mean, it's, it's a lot of money. You know, that's something we talked.
Cost the insurance companies, though, because instead of just a remodel, we got a whole, whole new build.
Yeah. Yeah.
Out here, anyway, I mean, it's getting to was it last Thursday, the first? Oh, damn, I was hearing about it. Scott Craig, that fire.
Yeah. Nobody.
My trucker calls me, tells me to call the fire department. I'm like, don't you know the number of the fire department? But I, and it was a mile from Charter Oak and it still took twenty minutes before anybody was there. There's no way around.
Yeah. Yeah, daytime's always been a challenge, but now it's probably almost impossible.
Yeah, it, it's getting that way, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, these are things that, I don't know, I think.
Same with the delayed services response, firing EMS, those people in rural areas are gonna start paying more for insurances.
Well, actually, the part that, the, what they started talking about on this meeting really bit my back. So, well, probably not more, but equal, equal to anything going. They would just start to, oh, I guess we're gonna have to start paying more for property tax. But it's just easy to raise that up and say that, I mean, and.
I think one of our senators down at the State House said, well, if you don't like it, don't live in that area, one of our local ones.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Nice.
They're concerned about the response move.
Wow. That's pretty sharp.
Can't try to make it better? It's not an option, just move.
Just move.
I just move. Where do you move to?
State first.
Still do your thing out here. Yeah, pretty impressive. I think that, I think this is, you know, I was just, in my mind, isn't I didn't say anything in the meeting, but.
Maybe he meant that he don't have an answer for it at this time. Maybe that, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I'm taxing and paying. Staffing.
Yeah.
The hospitals struggle on staffing this season.
Well, or everybody is. It's just America.
The only reason why it's shorthanded. I mean, because I know they love to pay to try to increase their staff, but it don't seem to be the answer.
That is not always the answer.
No, money isn't always the answer. Some people just don't have the desire to get out of bed. Put them on the night shift.
That can be, I mean, that can be a demanding job. It's not just, they'll help the old ladies or women out anymore. I mean, it's.
Yeah. You know, and there's a lot. You know, like the training and it's constant and, and then the threat of getting in trouble because you, you know, lawsuits. And I, I think in the medical profession, I mean, like tort reform, you know? Insurance people like the word tort reform, don't they?
They would probably be, I mean, they gotta do some reform to where registered nurses and stuff aren't gonna be or doctors or whatever, you know? You may be a doctor, but you can't necessarily show up at a scene and do medical treatment because you are an of emergency EMS. Which is totally dumbfounding to me. That's somebody that lives and works at twenty-four, every day, that's their job. Can't show up on an emergency scene and provide patient care.
Yeah.
It's out of their practice.
Is there anybody a doctor on this plate? I don't consider the movies, can't do it for your life.
Is that reform there would I help?
That's a good point. Yeah, and that's some of the, I mean, that was, that was the extent of what they were talking about. It was their struggle to get people. And, you know, then volunteer wise, I mean, obviously, just paying for the classes not always enough because, you know, you're spending time away from your family. Most of them are young people. I mean, there are a lot of people my age going out to be the E M T next week. I mean, I'm already established, so if I was gonna be the E M T, I already would be, you know? So I think that the, these are the challenges that we face going forward. I'm the back end of the baby boomer, so I mean, I know all the boomers ahead of me. That might be you all ahead of me. Getting all the benefits before I get there, so all used up, the goodies all gone. Anyway, I think those are some of the some issues that we're gonna have to deal with.
You think that we should readdress our, that incentive program that we had talked about at the beginning of the year?
You mean like the fire service thing?
Right. I mean, we said that we would readdress that, that we would continue to discuss that.
I mean, there, there's some things that we gotta look at. I, I, what, what's the answer? I mean, I think we gotta take off our blinders and examine the whole picture. I really do. I mean, if that's something that'll help, then it's something to talk about.
I don't know how, I mean, we could get a group together from the prominent providers in the county and sit down and talk to them and see if they've spit moss and stuff, but I just don't, I don't see. You know, you look at Charter Oak. The it's not the Charter Oak I grew up in where, you know, everybody was community oriented. Now it's a, it's a sleepover town.
You know?
And half the people, I, three quarters of people, I don't even know who they are or where they came from, you know? When I deliver papers, you knew everybody.
Yeah.
If you didn't know, you hadn't delivered paper. I was gonna scare you. You're like someone that's rambling or something. But, yeah, they, I just don't, you know, they don't have that sense of community because they haven't been here. And they won't be here long. They're here a year or two and then they're gone. Once in a while, you get some people there.
Almost, yeah.
But usually, they've got some past history in military and stuff and they've already, they've got they've always had a desire to continue to serve. That's what I see.
When you look at, it's like Charter Oak or Manayel or small towns, they're shrinking, but yet you look at Waukegan, Ankeny, you know, Theygel, they're all growing. you know, they now, they're all growing, faster than they can handle it, but I mean, we're losing our people.
Yeah, and that's the challenge going forward, I mean, we don't have the number of people and we're spread out. And I don't, you know, just listening to some of these other counties out there discuss their, their challenges, I thought, I heard it was bad, but I don't feel so bad anymore.
Sure.
Two-hour delays.
They always have it worse than we do, you know.
But it's still, it's something that I think, you know, probably at our level, it's gonna have to, we're, we're gonna have to start spitballing some ideas and then start sharing some successes. I mean, that was some of the stuff that was brought up, when people are trying things different, share our successes through, through NACO.
They talked about, about privatization of those services.
Yeah, they had some, this guy actually, Sean Baird, actually operated a private ambulance service, I think he must have been down in the, not in one of the city areas, but down in that new, down there in the, in the Bayou area, sounded like, anyway.
My fear of that is more like our MCOs, where they're doing it for profit. You either get less services, cause they can't afford, even the quality that the volunteers do, or the price is so high, you can't afford it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, all their private, they, they didn't, Harlan, that they, their private ambulance service, that kinda fell apart.
Yeah, went to the wayside, yeah.
So I mean, they were established for years of the private industry down there and that fell apart.
I think once the people that were running it decided they were gonna retire, isn't that what kinda threw it down?
Bob retired and then.
Yeah, it's just that, that nobody's motivated to do that going forward, with, down there anyway.
Fire departments are having trouble, the EMS is having trouble trying to find people to work.
Yep.
Or volunteer.
Yeah.
Or even get paid.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we were, that, that was, those were the things, I mean, every level of fire service, and EMS services having a challenge.
Yeah.
Acquiring people, acquiring funding, getting the training necessary, and I think that's, I don't know, we're gonna have to start thinking of some things, you know, maybe that's, maybe we create a little task force.
The, the training is insane, and what they, what, what is, what is expected, and if you don't do it, and something happens, you're gonna get your, you know what, so, yeah, the service you work for, or the city or, or town, or the county, if you don't have that certification.
Yeah.
Correct.
Throw another wrench into it, it's not just firing EMS, it becomes law enforcement as well.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, we're, we're way shorter than us, I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
University of Department of Police and that, I just, people just, they love the service.
Yeah, and you can blame them.
We're hiring two non-certifieds tonight.
Are you really? So what, do you get them on and start training them?
Yeah, you can do ride, ride long, so they can only drive so many, they can't do so many things, and then they're gonna go in school, and then they're tied up for six, eight, ten weeks, whatever it is.
Can I get in a school, you have any issues with that?
They would have any troubles, they'd bring the gun pass, the physical and all that.
Do you part of the contract require them to stay so long after they get?
Yeah, but other counties or other cities, if they want them bad enough, they'll buy the contract out. We've had three already that have left, but the, the communities that they went to bought, bought out the contract.
What you guys are experiencing is what most all small towns went through already in the late eighties, early nineties, I mean, I remember when Charter Oak was going down that road, they'd hire non-certified to get their certification and, down the center or whatever, would buy them out.
Yeah, there's, there's towns that are smaller than, I, I think, was there a valley base way more than we do?
Yeah.
Just to start.
Okay, uh, the other stuff that I had, I had a, uh, our main agri committee got together last week. Um, and then I got a little alert here that said, Jim Jordan said, don't get too worked up, he said, we're still working on the farm bill stuff behind the scene and, but uh, you know, the GT is at Thompson, that he's the, he's the chair, chair of the, I'll say, they're still working on that stuff, um. I don't know what's, what working on means, I mean, there's a few things in there that I wanna make sure gets staying in there, I don't know how for sure that's gonna work out, so, hopefully the House gets its uh, act in order, so to speak. Uh, rural communities still at a disadvantage when uh, competing for government grants, and I think it's just, you know, I mean, like Paul's good at writing up these transportation grants. And uh,
Is that federal grants?
Yeah, and I just think that uh, getting grants for rural development and that type of things, you know, there's just not as many good grant writers out here, you know, we even talked about maybe if you, if you had to in the future, have a person on staff that you gave a decent little base salary to and then, give them a percentage of grants as a write-up, you know, I mean, but I don't know if you can afford that even, but I mean, that's kind of the challenge out here in all of America, I mean, for as bad as we think we have it sometimes, there's some of them counties out there, I don't know, they even afford their staffs, they have to have, you know, auditor, treasurer, and recorder offices and all that.
I mean, since those grants can be for cities, schools, counties, the, coalition between the three, tax asking entities to hire someone, I mean, between the three of us, it's not just on one entity to hire somebody.
Well, you look as good as Paul.
We have a discussion, I think that's feasible.
Cause even as good as Paul is at putting grants together, I mean, there, when he gets a real high dollar, when he gets under help to make sure that, he's got all the blocks checked, you know.
Cause I mean, I think we should be taking advantage of our location and our diversity in our county, and the fact that we are low-income county, and yet very diverse, you get the, like Paul always says, you, Crawford County hits a lot of check boxes.
Yeah.
Check a lot of boxes in those grants. So maybe we're leaving some stuff out there now, we could qualify for that we're not applying for. It'd be nice to know it is all available, I mean, that's the whole thing, you need to know.
Well, we used to get a list of all the grants that were available, you know, in the uh, that media thing that we get, uh, I don't know if we've gotten one recently, but there was quite a few.
Cause I mean, when you go to the, I don't know, what it is, grants.gov or something like that, you go to that website, I mean, it's just, it's kinda overwhelming to try to,
Yeah.
find something specific, you're, you know, it's just, there's so much stuff there, and to try to narrow it down and, I don't know, it's.
Then when you find it, you have to find somebody that is qualified to write a good grant, you know, and know exactly what fluff you have to put in there and.
Grant writer.
Yeah, no, who is one of you two, so you might have to get grant writer.
We talked about in the past where they're seeing grant writers that they get a percentage up to the grant, and incentivize them, so you don't have to pay them a hundred thousand dollars for a salary, but,
Right.
if they're successful.
You know, that's kind of the thing that we, we mess up on here, I mean, to hire these people that are specialized in that kind of a skill set, with these big counties, cities will pay them a boatload of money, so to get them, I mean, you gotta have some kind of incentive there, you know, I mean, obviously you can offer insurance as a full-time job or something, but.
I mean, certainly, when we were at the ISAT meeting, and one of the things that they said was, counties need to find different sources of income.
Yeah.
And so, and it's one avenue to go down.
It comes at a cost, and if you, you know, you pay somebody eight bucks to do it.
I mean, twenty years ago, we never thought we'd have an IT person, I'm assuming, for, for the county.
Yeah, exactly.
That changed.
That was, and I was actually was looking some stuff up on that the other day, alternate sources of income, New York City, what do you think they got on parking tickets slash?
Oh.
How much you think they made?
It, it'd be crazy.
Five hundred, just like five hundred thirty-five's the number, five hundred thirty-five million, just parking. Holy crap, that little meter, what do they call it, meter major?
Well, that, you know, you have to have.
Driving around in them little motorcycle looking juddies.
I wonder how many actually got paid.
Well, I mean, I didn't say that, but.
We'd have a hard time enforcing that in our rural.
Yeah.
Pretty sure you're right.
But I just, I was just thinking, you know, I mean, I'm just, when I was looking through that, I was, I just stuck it in my mind.
Lost heart setting up speed trams and stuff.
Illegal parking on a gravel road.
Yeah.
Well, it's even hard to not have the owner of the business not park right in front of their business every day, it's, it takes somebody to complain about it several times and, you know, and then it's just like, well, nobody else is parking there, but can't believe that as many people are downtown all day parking. This again, you know.
You know, cause just applying to grant or an alternate source of income is still, you're still applying for other tax dollars.
Grants, right, but it seems like our federal government is unaware of that, they just have. That will never go away.
Got a print and press and plenty of ink.
And then you got, nobody parks.
Well, nobody's cutting anything, so.
That's also driving, part of them, cost of operations for everything, so that inflation makes it harder for us to do everything out here.
Remember K phones.
Yeah, we are our own problem, let's face the fact, you know, I mean, as far as the, all the way up through the system, our own name problem. Uh, USDA.
Bring up that, our secondary roads contract.
Oh, yeah, I'll bring that up, sure, yeah, uh, our contract is done for secondary roads, so that'll be on the, uh, agenda for next week. We just, we just got a copy of that last.
What does that say to me?
And it's nice and simple and straightforward, you know, so we didn't have to have a, a legal jargon in it, you know. So what, I don't want, we'll have that, if you could put that on our agenda for next week, Mary. And if we can get that to them, they were asking about it. And uh,
Gina's not being discussed the burn ban, why we got Greg here?
No, there's no time by it.
We don't have a time by it?
Nope.
Yeah, I guess we could.
Time spying.
We don't.
We had to wait till after nine forty-five, or we could just knock that out right away.
I think we could knock it out.
You don't think anybody will wanna show up to voice their opinion?
Noon today, that's all right.
Noon today.
We had a lottery.
I can make a motion to rescind the burn ban at noon effective. So at noon today.
Well, noon today, all right, burn ban will be to rescinded, motion made by Mr. Schultz, second by Mr. Dozart, noon today. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Posed no, carryable, motion carries, thanks, Mr. Schultz.
Very good.
Burn ban's done at noon.
Uh.
Burn ban.
Military and veterans of the, they, last, or last week, they did ask about what we're doing for green light, I know anybody else, anything other than Louise. You know, I mean, so, they wanted us to take some pictures and send it in.
Remote green lights in the windows of the courthouse and what, there was something like that, didn't work out.
Probably still have them.
Wasn't she gonna get one of those things to project?
Project, I thought so, maybe we should ask her, I thought she would.
Well, she talked about it, but I know we were gonna maybe get, put green lights in the windows of the courthouse, but.
Well, Louise says she was gonna do it, she will do it.
I mean, we want, we could put green lights all over and match that lighting around the courthouse, shining up on the building.
We could. Do you want me to see if she's in? Should I just go talk to her afterwards?
Well, we could change them for different things too.
Yeah.
Yeah, get different colors for different seats, you should have some red and black ones for October, a black one.
On black light and a dark. Catch me out here.
I'm just going all in colors, I didn't say it made sense.
You're all in on this Halloween thing?
Yeah, I actually was, I went off another day, had black and orange on, looked at me, was the wife's idea. And from the maker house.
How'd that go?
Yeah, we're still working on it. So yes, last week also, I, I probably won't bring up all of the details into the CDC, but they had their strategic planning, uh, including some figures that we, that we will talk about here as far as including other aspects of the county, when they're doing their plannings for events, uh, they talked about events, um, that would, you know, I, I kept trying to drag it back to us. Well, I mean, we talked about the uh, development aspect and uh, some of the things that I probably shouldn't talk about, but, I mean, I wanted them to be, to be more proactive on assisting Adam over there in Carroll with the Highway Thirty project, because some of the businesses that I've talked to since I've been on this, that's always what they're talking about, is a safe, fast highway, in and out, and we're serviced by five US or state highways, but, you know, they're just normal highways, you know, normal two lanes, I mean, fifty-nine's got some passing lanes, so it's, what do they call that, a super two? Well, I mean, there's not much super about it, you know, well, they are getting it smooth again, going south here. But uh, I said, infrastructure is, really think that we should be working on, you know, that type of stuff. And when I, and I didn't bring this up at the meeting, but I sure meant to, and as I was driving home, even including, you know, promoting the use of our airport and stuff, you know, I mean, I mean, we, we, you know, we talked about the stuff when I was down there at NACO, where they had the heli, or the drone-type, helicopter-looking things that were, were used for taxis, I even read something where there was one of the cities over in Far East that was, gonna do a test run on that, I don't know if it was Singapore or what, but uh, I just think that's kind of interesting, like, but stuff that you gotta constantly be looking for, if you don't wanna hear come need to be, the next ghost county. If you wanna keep, keep up with stuff, and then obviously development stuff, but, we didn't discuss a lot on the housing aspect, because I don't know if that's necessarily CDC's wheelhouse. Each town has their, should have their own housing, I get pretty good at eating up the time here, and I'm trying hard here, but uh, there was a lot discussed, I think that Paul's spitting in pretty, pretty good over there.
How much money did we make on barbecue fest?
Um.
We will find out.
Well, the numbers aren't all in.
Really?
But she's here today, so.
Numbers aren't all in?
No, no, I mean, sounds like some of them vendors getting everything back and forth isn't always the fastest, tickets.
To stay and wait till, they won't leave until they get their money, they have to go count the tickets, they actually weigh those tickets, and those people walk out with everything that they.
Mariah will be here today.
All right.
Let's get her.
How much did, did the party room cost?
The party room, that was a little expensive, not gonna lie, maybe I should bring my check with me.
I, I, I will say they actually made a profit, I do know.
Oh, okay.
But uh, which is something that I've been barking for, for about three years already. To get, where it's making a profit, Evan was always determined that that was a nonprofit organization, but, I, I think your events can have a profit that help you pay for improving your, your development.
Or boost the tax burden to the citizen.
Well, that's kinda, you know, and then you don't have to, you know, up membership dues or anything, and, that was one of the big things that was on the strategic planning, was to do more going out and talking to the folks and uh, sounds like that Drew might stay on, you know, they had him on loan from the college when he was out of the, when he came out of the Navy, went to the school out here. And Garcia had it set up to where they could work for CDC and, and the school actually paid that in college, and it was job training stuff. And uh, sorry, the uh, uh, and he did a good job, he's dating uh, one of the Galena girls.
Oh.
So, I mean, really good guy, he's old Navy, you know, he's not retired Navy, but he's, he's prior service guy, good, good kid. Good say kid, good young man, I'll say, um, so I think that they might be keeping him around, right now within a part-time status, but uh, he actually knows the system pretty well, so that'll help out Mariah and Paul quite a bit, so.
Is Paul coming over there too, or just?
I think it'll just be Mariah, he's covered for tourism right now, so.
Yeah, it's like, are you touring for us or?
I don't know what, I, you know what, I, I got the feeling that Paul and Mariah and then Drew are gonna try to take, I don't know, that's, we'll see how it's going, I mean, I think they're killing it out. Looked to me like Steph was letting them sort through things on their own a little bit, you know, she's our president this year, so, uh, we step in. Anyway.
I don't know, maybe he's not coming. I will point out, I'll, I'll take.
It looks like the embassy right next to the White House.
Okay, that looks like a dreary old place. That is now where all of our adolescents and children in mental health will be going. That's uh, uh, they're, after November first, they'll no longer be going to Cherokee, they'll all be ordered. And that's exactly, from the House file, uh, for. And that's exactly from House File, uh, four seventy-one. Uh, effective November first, Cherokee Mental Health Institute, no longer, so children, adolescent admissions. You shall be ordered to the Independence Mental Health Institute after November first.
That's across. That one I don't.
That's Independence Iowa, Independence Iowa, so if you have a child or a youth, that's where they're all gonna be ordered.
Oh, really?
Break it to you next week, but we had a little time. I'll continue on that conversation next week, how that's gonna work out.
How was everyone?
Pretty good. I didn't give a snickers for you, sorry.
If you guys are somewhere else. I love them, but I don't need them, so, thank you. Very cycle. Ones here, so, um, yeah, just have one utility permit with Central crossing, uh, hundred and seventieth street there next to G A Avenue, so since it is a water, you don't have to sign it there, Mr. Chairman. So, that is for copies. Uh, the, uh, bridge update, after a bridge contractor is done, and they're moving out, um, or have moved out. And the grading contractor should be up there working on it as we speak, trying to get some dirt hole from the north side of the south side to finish the blisters they have to put on for the guard rail. And then, uh, remove the slab and hopefully get the, uh, approach slab contractor in there towards the end of the week or next week and.
Keep them up across this.
Yeah? There's a lot of concrete, yeah, it's not going.
Even how they took from the dirt rail up, it'll spot.
Yeah, that's intended to, uh, uh, keep the splash from the winter abrasives from going on top of that, so, and we do have a little bird bath there that we're gonna address too before everything's done, so, yeah.
Concrete's cheap, so that's good.
We'll get it figured, but, uh, concrete is not cheap. But anyhow, yeah, no, we'll get it, we'll get it, we'll get that out there, so. But yeah, so they're, they're moved out, um, you know, they were supposed to do some work on top of that too, to kind of dress that, top of those cabs up a little bit on the pier wall yesterday. So. And branding and grouting, um, but yeah, all in all, structurally, it's in good shape, so.
That's good, cause you, it was going on last week, it was condemned.
The bridge, well, I would say that it's haunted, that, yeah, but it is a little bit haunting, cause it just doesn't seem to want to go away. Um, but we're getting there, it could be a nice bridge myself. The, uh, Manel Maintenance Shop, you know, we had a pre-con, they moved in with a bunch of stuff last week, and then they put it all out yesterday, so. We're gonna get in there, start looking on the concrete foundations, I thought they were gonna start in that, and of course, range towards the end of the week, but um, I don't know, I don't know why they did that. Um, the, uh, great crew continued to work down around three hundred street, um, and we'll just be working down in that area, until you get down there, then a little bit around T Avenue, crank away there for a while, don't show us where we're going to. The end of the year, uh, bridge crew doing some patching, uh, just miscellaneous stuff, they're just kind of cleaning up. And then they'll start on that R Avenue Bridge here soon. Uh, roadside, pretty much done with the seeding. Uh, we take the seeding out of these contract projects, and, uh, just because they're so expensive, and I think we can do it for a lot less. So a couple of things we've been doing, uh, the seed and surveying, staking, the, uh,
I see Brent like early today.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, yeah, that's beautiful weather, you know, we got a lot of work, getting ready for next year's project. Uh, but anyhow, uh, and then we started hauling the riprap in ourselves, and then it's just a furnished item, so that keeps one of our guys busy hauling riprap. And then we get the riprap that we want, it's always gonna be the support site, so. Uh, so, you know, we've kind of taken a few things out of the contract that we just do at house, and I think we can do pretty cost-effective, so there's a few of them. Um, so, I want to seed that, as soon as the grading contracts are done, we're gonna seed it. Get something growing, it'll double the rate of fall rise, we'll get something green out there. Uh, growing yet this fall, get some good cover on it, and then we'll see what it looks like next year, not the best time to see permanent seeding, but, um, we're gonna try that on that project. Um, next two items are the purchase of these, uh, dump trucks, and I, I talked to you last week, they're going up considerably. Um, like everything, uh, has, um, but if you, you know, if we want trucks on the road by this time next year, there's a nine-month lead time on the plow equipment. Um, and I've also explored, you know, the option of rebuilding the plows, which we did the last time, the other price saved us about twenty thousand dollars a truck. It's certain, in terms of us doing it versus what we pay them. However, the guys aren't that excited about it, they're plenty busy anyhow, and you, you know, you, I, I mean, our, our time is worth money as well. We still end up with an old files, so, so this kind of lays it out, you know, twenty twenty-one, you know, four years ago, we would have bought it for four hundred, now we're up to five sixty-four. Uh, I talked to a couple of other county engineers, they said the plow equipment, it has gone up considerably. Um, I talked to Zach over in Carroll County, and they're building, they're putting their own on. Their, their hydraulics, wing, the plow, all the equipment, dump body, all that's running about a hundred and twenty thousand. We're like one forty-four, so. I don't know.
They're, Carol's putting the, getting the new equipment.
And they build it all themselves, they do that all themselves.
They're doing a rebuild, or?
They buy new, so all their new, all their new equipment.
How much does that save them?
Well, about twenty-four thousand according to, to this, now it's a different brand, but it's very similar equipment. So they're buying, Anderson, we buy all of them.
So they're putting it on, so.
They're, they're doing all the amount.
Not really saving twenty-four thousand. Cause they're still paying somebody to do it.
They got painted, they gotta, you know, you gotta do, I mean, we're busy, the way it is.
Do they have a special crew that does that, or they?
They got some people that are pretty good. Fabrication, Green County does a lot of that.
You're in California, you're still taking those men away from something else to do it, so.
Yeah, I don't know, motor graders have gone from, motor graders have gone from three thirty to four fifty, you know, so, I, I don't know. Uh, we can think about it a little bit, but it's just.
Inflation's white just right now, I mean.
Oh, it is, it is.
And snow plows and motor graders are the two things that we are kind of mandated to do.
You gotta have, you gotta have the roads cleared. Yeah, so, so I've got it on here, just because I know what the lead times are, but if you, you all want, you know, you do some more, or you want to think about it, you know, I, I don't have any problem with that, you know.
I mean, waiting isn't gonna have the price go down.
Yeah, they're, you know, so the truck bill dates are in July of twenty twenty, right now. Get a bill slot there, and then they, and, and then the, the lead time on the plows is nine months right now. So, you know, which gets us into June, July.
So we have to order them not to actually out here by the time the trucks.
Right, right, yeah, and then this would be, you know, contingent upon a budget, so really, you know, right now, you're looking at, you already bought a motor grader. Okay, uh, you put this in there, that's a million dollars, that's the whole equipment budget.
Right.
Well, there's always things you, you, you could put in there, but, um, you know.
Is that about annually, what you?
In, in that range, just gone up to one point four and down to nine hundred, depending, but now, I mean, with inflation, it's it's gonna be in that million dollar range.
But Paul, for what you buy yearly, the motor grader and these items are the complement of what to keep.
Gotta have them, yeah, gotta have them, so. So again, you know, I'm just kind of giving you an update where we're at with things, um, you know, we've always tried to kind of stay out of the curve a little bit, you know, try to get the equivalent, we got that new dump truck, I mean, that little international single axle dump truck down there, costs us about two hundred and ten thousand. Just to put things in perspective, you know, for a single axle dump truck.
For the first one you bought when you were an engineer, under a hundred?
Eighty-five, yeah, yeah, it was a dump truck with everything on it.
We're with you, Greg, we're not saving nothing by waiting.
No.
Just prolonging it.
No.
Still contingent on budget approval. It, it is, you know.
Go to either, get a name on the, on the bill sheet, that's probably a smart time to do it, I would agree. And the worst case scenario, Paul has to call him, one of us has to call him, say, give our slot to somebody else, our budget can't withstand both of them, but we can do one.
Yeah, I, I think that's always in the, that's always in the cards, you know, you know, they oh, find a home for it if we don't, you know, so. Then ship the bill slot to somebody else.
Yeah, I'm sure somebody else would be happy to take that slot, we gave it up.
Yeah, cause right now, Mac has only allocated so many bill slots, and so they fill them up, and then you got a waiting list for the next group. So.
I move that we approved the purchases of line item four and line item five, uh, subject to budget approval, second.
Motion was made by Mr. Dozart, second by Mr. Mulbauer, purchased two Mac Grand Series Danone Dump Trucks. Drew Hallsby Mac, one thirty-eight, one fifty. Each, uh, total of two seventy-six, three hundred, to be paid in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, depending on budget approval. Purchased two sets of Monroe RD, RSDS Dump Dump Body Spreader, Monroe twelve introversible plows, uh, nine-foot wings, hydraulic controls, mounting, painting, Hawkeye Truck Equipment, one forty-four, thirty-nine. Each total of two eighty-eight, seventy-eight, to be paid in FY two twenty twenty-five, depending on budget approval. Any further discussion?
Those prices are guaranteed.
Yeah. Also. Any further discussion? All in favor, state so by saying aye. Oppose no, terrible.
Uh, we did have a truck driver in the Dow City shop, and it's night, Thursday. I sent you all an email, kind of giving you an update, um, so, we, we have on the west side, we've had one, so the ditching crew is made up of three, three individuals, one's a truck driver slash excavator operator, kind of the lead guy. And then there's two truck drivers, and that one truck driver position on the west side's been hasn't been filled for quite some time now, we, uh, have Mitch Schwartz, who is works part-time, and, and we've just kind of been able to make it all work out. Um, so I'm proposing that we fill both of those, the one in Dow City that's now vacant, and, and then we're gonna put the other one in Dennison. It could go somewhere else, it could go as last week, it could go to Charter, it could go to a lot of different places, but I advertised it for Dennison. And we'll see what happens there, um, because we do have another individual that's gonna be retiring, motor grader operator, and I'm gonna do some moving around, shuffling with motor grader operators. And then we'll probably be one motor grader operator short, so we're, we're down to kind of the bare bones when it comes to snow removal. And, you know, in, in terms of having enough people to cover, and I'm gonna try to see if I can get some part-time people to, to manage that peak as well, and have some people that are kind of on standby, but, um, you know, again, through the the process here, we're in a contraction mode right now, of trying to, was, trying to get by with few people as possible, and, and really, our staffing moving forward is probably gonna be dictated by snow removal, and then we'll just adjust whatever work we can get done during construction season with that staff, so. Anyhow, um, so, while we'll be filling two positions, there'll be one coming open, or that's gonna be vacant, probably here in November. And by the time we get this person on, it'll probably coincide with that. And I think we'll be alright, you know, you, we have to manage vacation time and that sort of thing throughout the winter months, so that we have people here to cover it, but there's always someone that gets, you know, sick or something unexpected comes up, so uh, you, you gotta have at least a plan B for, for those things, so, uh, so far, so good. Uh, but some of our retired people make it very clear, the one thing that they do not want to do
Move my number in the winter?
Watch the video, I don't blame them.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you gonna hang around for? Alright, well, since Paul's done it. Think what we'll do is we'll just move on to the next discussion, County Workforce Safety Advisory Group, speakers, Mr. Bill Dickey and Mr. Kurt Miller, if you guys would come forward. Kind of can pull an extra chair up.
Good morning. So thank you for your time this morning. We are here to follow up on conversations we've had originally, starting with Bill with IMWCA, who is the county's work count carrier, to consider having a formal safety, okay, at that time, Bill talked with Paul, who we believe has one of the strongest, uh, safety programs that we've seen. Paul kind of said his, feels like his plate with the safety, and he's doing a great job, and knowing the age he is, that maybe we push this to somebody else and others groups, right? So, Bill followed up with me, and I contacted Ty, we then had a meeting, and we we talked about it, and I think he brought it to you guys, and we're back here to say, are you considering it? Would you consider it? We believe it. Keeps your employees safe, and it saves premium dollars, so we're kind of here to see what else you might need from us to, thank you, to the next step, I guess.
You guys in share work with other counties that do the same thing, or?
Quite a few, actually, and you can speak on that.
I know you say, you know, we are, we, we're hired to manage the pool for this city and county governments. We have, um, uh, seventy-nine of the nine counties. Uh, my job is I got the western part of the state, so basically, I go as far over as, um, Green County. We board, board and board, I've been with IMWCA for only three years, my background is, I have public works and law enforcement, with a background, a small government of most title, uh, that's how we, that's how IMWCA works, they're, they're looking at people that have been in a field. And then to, they'll teach you the insurance, they want you to know the, you know, kind of the working, you know, so. Um, my main thing is, is I, you know, I just listened to you guys today, your guys' problem or situations are no different than anywhere else that we go to. You know, your people, that you employ, your assets, nobody has any extra, don't seem like they're overstaffed. Um, so, but if you have somebody gone, you gotta figure out how to backfill that, plus, and you also gotta figure out the finances to go with that. The last portion of it is, that person is not enjoying life outside of work. And that is important for me, and my, or the reason why I would work for rather say, it's important for the employees, they work hard enough here. When they watch that clock, that when they go home, they need to be in a position where they can enjoy a lot of things, and, um, we've seen since COVID, that some of the committees, groups, and our entities have a point, and now we're seeing an uptick in some claims. Now, you're coming in from bless. I'm, I'm nervous, I'm, you guys have been great. Uh, you have one, you have one claim that's up, that, that, that is, that's out there, and, and it might see a little uptick, but realistically, you're in good shape. Uh, most counties I come and talk to, I'm coming to tell you that something needs to be done here soon, because the money that you were paying back to the pool can't buy a dump truck, or can't buy a grader, because you're paying back the pool for the lost wages. And medical expenses, so I felt. Um, so that's what, that's what we're here for today, I, I think it's important, and if I didn't think it was important, I wouldn't be here. Um, Ty asked for examples of other cities, or, or other counties that I work with, and I gave him counties similar size. One is knocking on the ballpark, always has, their claims are, are very, one that I just started a year ago with. And, and realistically, what we look at is, is, um, incidents are gonna happen, but prevent the, what we can prevent uh, is what's we like to do, um, and then one county I'm working with, it has nothing to do with the committee. I can say that because incidents are going to still happen, but they have dropped their claims on the rolling claim in the last year. And I think it's all into the idea where the employees are not complacent.
So what does it entail to form a safety committee?
A safety committee is basically your, the, your department heads or your, your department's. Get together and they look over, um, they're having a agenda, we say less than hour, meet together. We, we start out where we look at, we look at once a month. And then, uh, some goes to bi-monthly. Um, but the thing is, is if you go too much farther than that, you miss a meeting. You lost four, you lost four months, you lost six months if you go too far. The main thing is, is you look over your claims, see if there's anything you can do to prevent, um, training, you know, I've, realistically, um, like I said, I've done through two visits here. Realistically, I, I know a little, uh, training's being done in secondary roads, rest of the departments I do not have. And I don't have, realistically, as a team. You know, it, it's great to share the wealth of the trainees for the, for your, all your employers, you know? Granted, you're going to have a different, uh, bloodborne pathogen type deal for law enforcement as you do for ladies in the city hall or in the court, in the courthouse. But, you know, but realistically, it's, it's, it's for the betterment of your employees. Um, the other thing is, is you go, yeah, if you have a general safety policy. Yeah, you go through, those are the people that go through that and it should be a living document. It should be one of those things that it shouldn't be worth to go through to find out if it's, if it's good or, or even if it's, if it's valid or not. It should be one of those things that you look through yearly, you know? And it's, and it doesn't have to be a chore. It's, it's one of those things that is when you have a new employee. This is what we have, you know, this is what we have, you know, this is what you do when you get injured. This is what you do, you know, this is what we have for training, this is what we have to offer.
Are you or Kurt involved in those meetings, or?
We, we can be.
Can be, there's no doubt, there's no doubt.
Happy to be, you know, to be up here and, and see what's going on and give some direction, but ultimately they have to have the input and take it back and enact anything that they talk about.
So just mentioned the thinking that, I mean, if you identify that, hey, we have a problem with A. Okay, how do we make it so A doesn't occur as often? You know, maybe that's where we need expert advice. To come in and say, hey, here's what other people have done when they had that same problem.
Yep, I, I, we are to a point that, I mean, seriously, I'm, or I'm to a point where I'm going to say, you know, if you need help to get started, we are, we're here to help you. That's, 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 that's the main reason why we're here today. Go ahead.
Are you recommending like videos and a little quiz afterwards? That's kind of what we do. You know, or, or do you guys just talk about like trip hazards, you know, as you can think about it in an office setting, trip hazards, um, having, uh, extension cords and things like that. I don't know what, what situation is in the courthouse or, uh, space heaters. I've known in some of these older buildings, they're cold and so I have a space heater under the desk and nobody even knows it and it's a real safety hazard. Do you identify those kind of issues or how, how does it start? You have your department heads get together and how do you get the conversation started about what we need? Let's just say in the actual courthouse itself.
Okay. IMWCA does, um, work with Scott.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would imagine I cap. Okay, you have I cap for your. I didn't want to speak out loud, sorry about it. So, yes, they, they will also be the same, they, they'll be the same. I mean, they'll work, they'll work with you also for your liability portions. Our biggest thing is we have a lot of aides and we have a lot of, um, uh, aides and a lot of expertise that we'd like to provide, that we provide free of charge. I mean, it's part of your, it's part of your, um, your premium. Um, and the thing is, is, you know, we have, um, self-inspection list, you know, for different locations. I mean, so we have those on our website, um, and we can provide that too. We have a training, um, major, there's training matrix out there from, and it's basically come from the OSHA standards of what people should have in what intervals. It, the weather, how you do depending is fine. IMWCA has an on-learn or an online. It's a NeoGo product, it's, it's learn and it's free. It's free to all of our members. Um, that's, so if, if you guys have other trainings that's in person, that's awesome. We, we have this for supplement for people that don't have or don't have the access. Uh, we have some like what we talked about today, smaller towns that don't have, that, because we, 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 we represent anybody from a, uh, part-time city clerk in a council, all the way up to a, a large city. I mean, that's our, our large town. So, I mean, that's, so we're kind of, um, as a wide, wide variety, so.
So what I hear, it's free, so there's no cost to it. So what, what we're here today is to decide if we want to get a workforce safety advisory committee put together and go from there on whether we feel we need to, because I'm familiar with tapping into the, you get three a month or whatever and you, but the question would be, so we'd have everybody go to sign in, go through the safety. Do we get a discount then from the insurance company if we show that we're using safety trainings and, and things like that? Or what's the, the biggest advantage is just that we wouldn't have as many claims because we've been training them?
Your biggest advantage is investing in your employees.
Correct, okay.
Because the, um, right now, your discounts, you're receiving your discounts now because you are doing well.
Alright.
Um, my, if I would come to see you, wait until you have, um, a lot of large claims. Yes, then I, then I could, I could express to you.
Saving.
Got it. You know, I'm asking.
I ju, I'm just, I just definitely, I mean, my thing was, is I, I see the benefit of
I do too.
Your community, I really do. I see the benefit of your community and I, and, and your employees are your best assets.
I agree.
So that's the reason why I'm asking and.
Who typically spearheads it in your other counties?
It all, it all depends. Um, we have, we have, it, it's a whole variety. Paul's here, she'll be, but I, I, there's, there's some that's been engineers, there's some that's E M A. Um, some, some of them are, are a board supervisor member. I mean, it, it all, it all depends on what's, how it wants, how you want to design it. The biggest thing is it's, it's your committee. So the, it's what, this gotta be what's works for you.
Yeah.
It sounds like the advisory group would be department heads. Sounds like that's already clear cut how you do that. Um, but it's just who organizes the meetings, who facilitates.
You still need that one person.
That's right.
Hey, we're going to set up this meeting, here's what the video we're going to watch, here's the discussion we're going to have, agenda.
But I think we'd need expert help in, uh, designing, you know, what fits in, you know, it's, it's, we don't have to do any safety training at the courthouse on how to drive a snowplow. I've already done that, so we'd have.
Really, your safety meeting would be is, is to bring your mind together, to understand, and everybody would go out and do, I mean, spread your safety meetings, or your safety training. Departmentalized, you know what I mean? So.
The sheriff's department is probably not going to, don't need to run that snowplow, but they might, like said, bloodborne pathogens might be a higher priority safety treatment. Uh, so I think department heads get together, review the claims, if any. And then kind of have a general idea, take this back to your department and let's get these trainings pushed through the next.
But we still need that one person that is going to call the meetings, uh, kind of, uh, make people familiar with the website that you have that's available, you know, and then choose, because I've, there are lists and lists and lists of different safety training and you really have to specifically pick what is going to be unique to your department. It's not every shoe's going to fit every department.
Exactly.
Because otherwise it's just going to be a boring, why am I here? I have work I should be doing, uh, so we really need to key in on, uh, what, what we're trying to accomplish and not just waste people's time by watching a bunch of videos and doing anything to do with what I do. So who wants to be that person?
I don't think that the safety committee, if you will, would be there doing safety training themselves.
Yep.
I think it's more collectively where we at with things, uh, promoting, uh, programs. I know they used to have some safety programs that they promoted countywide. Uh, but it's more kind of collectively what's going on, what kind of claim system do you have? Wellness program, safety and wellness is kind of what it used to be, a committee and, uh, yeah, I don't know if there's anybody here that was organized at that time, but is there anybody?
I remember it.
But, uh, uh, anyhow, that's what it was intended to do, is just get everybody, everybody together once in a while to talk about some program what's going on, what, what are the other departments doing? That type of thing, a, as opposed to the department head sitting through a safety training program themselves, Jean, so I think there's just a little bit difference there. I think that's the, the spirit and intent, like you've encouraged, and this is what you're looking for.
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head. And it might start here and it might change. It doesn't have to be in a box kind of thing, but I would also encourage you, you had asked for a couple of counties what they do. You provided that, reach out to them and what they do and get maybe some, some real life information examples, you know? Again, we just, you have done great. Paul does run a great safety program down there. There, you could say that's the biggest risk in the secondary roads, but not necessarily. And why wait until you have the claims and then we gotta put pressure? Let's, let's enact, if you can see it as a proactive approach to send in your people home safe and ultimately saving some premium dollars.
Mr. Steinkiller?
I was just going to say Kurt probably knows this well. I cap just came with a guy came to visit us. We went through a lot of stuff and that's helpful because they do have tapes and stuff for us that we can watch it and that makes recommendations. As for our safety, as for us having any lawsuits, so I, I think be somewhat of a beneficial thing if, if we're having issues. Where we can, now they should look into what we can do.
Twelve years ago, we wouldn't have been even questioning any of us, our mind factor was so high, we couldn't afford to have insurance.
Well, I don't know if you remember, there's twelve years ago when I came back to town, I came out of Florence. I didn't know you. You were hot about, and you were, and, and from there, Paul, you've taken it from here to there and you're, safety is a huge concern here. We want it to be all departments, and we're just encouraging here, but we're not, we're not telling you have to do this, but if you don't believe in it, they won't believe in it, and then it is a wasted time. We don't want to see it as a wasted time. We want it to see that it's going to prevent injuries.
I think it's important to realize that you have to create a culture of safety. I mean, people have to just be conscious of it unconsciously, actually. And we've obviously, like you brought up earlier, we're either really, really lucky. Or we've already got our departments that run the higher risk, already engaging pretty well. But, uh, you won't be here forever, you won't be here forever, you won't be here forever. So if we've already got an organization within the county that's established, that's working to reinforce these things continuously. You know, our, obviously our, like I said, our main ones are already working well, so they can share insight to the other departments that haven't have, they don't probably have as much direct safety. I mean, we just had a safety training meeting out at, uh, Yellow Smoke here, what, three weeks, two weeks ago for, for secondary roads, I mean. So, I mean, he's in, in, in put, in part of that to his employees, this is important. I mean, they all wear their yellow reflective clothing all the time, you know, and stuff that's keeping them on a danger way, you know, as much as possible. Uh, the right, right equipment, you know, I mean, we, we may have departments here that don't even think about some of the ways that his is doing it or, you know, things that, that, you know, to, you know, bloodborne pathogens aren't just for you. I mean, we've got public health sitting here, I mean, and things that, you know, hey, I never even thought my people would be susceptible to this. I mean, you know, you're out there, guys dumping trash. We don't know what's involved in the trash can, you know, and so, I mean, there's different things that probably the whole county needs to, you know, talk about at least, you know, so if, if it was a department head thing, I mean, you guys could put designated representatives. Um, somebody, it seems like Jean's kind of wanting to focus on all who should run the meeting. Um, I would ask that, uh, you know, just as department heads, we all kind of show up and, and at the first meeting for sure. If we've got some help from the experts, subject matter experts, you know, to kind of get everything start, started and organized, you know, I think that, uh, you know, that would probably be a benefit, you know, so I, I, to me, I think it's a good idea. You can never promote safety enough. You know, I mean, obviously we're doing a good job, but, you know, instead of patting ourselves on the back, we should probably just be reinforcing our, our efforts.
Basically, what I was trying to focus is how do we get it started? There has to be, how, you know, here we all are. But who wants to take that lead and set that date and, uh, make the invitation?
This is Kim. This is Kim from Public Health and I will, with Bill and Kurt's assistance, facilitate the first meeting or two um, to get things rolling, if that will help.
Oh, outstanding, Kim. Thank you.
Excellent. There we go. I got to volunteer.
There you are. Okay, so, I mean, what, what we wanted the department heads for was some buy-in. I mean, you guys all think it's a good idea. I've seen more heads nodding and then unshaken or turning away, so. I assume that it's probably something that's beneficial to our workforce and our checkbooks, so, uh.
Alright. Be looking for that from a email from Kim.
Be looking for an email from Kim to all the different department heads and, and, uh, Kim, if you have trouble finding any of everybody's email, I'm sure our auditor can help you out with that.
Or IT person.
Or our IT person.
Yep.
Okay, well, I think that kind of covers that. Appreciate you guys coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I mean, gratefully at the table, thank you very much.
For new employees, but.
Well, it's a good point.
They're just being part of the day of your first day of work, but the goal is general safety and practice of the way you have the culture. If you get in the trenches, they're still, you know, I mean, you used to do it for your job, it's kind of weird. We, we, we want to train, but, so they're already on the job. Okay, or even before they ever get out.
Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. If any of your departments are, if a concern to you, the burn, the burn ban will be lifted today at noon. So if you've got things to clean up, if you can. Uh, next on our agenda is the, uh, Orion Nutt, would you please turn forward, man? I see you brought, I see you brought a good support staff, so bring him on up. We, we kind of have a.
Just talking about.
Okay, the floor is yours, madam.
Um, so, yeah, we've hired Drew, uh, Aaron as our new tourism coordinator, so.
Well, that's the official title.
That's the official title.
I've been asking what they want to call me.
Um, yeah, so Drew's going to take a lot, over a lot of what she needed, um, and I'll kind of help over, so. Uh, yeah, but we're excited after, you know, I mean, it's from, here from Dennison, so that kind of fills in the gap that Paul and I don't have. Um, currently, we're going through a, um, our whole organization, the C D C is going through a strategic plan. Um, and tourism will have its own kind of section in there with its own goals and its own strategies of what we're, um, going to um, do and how we're going to implement it, so hopefully by the next tourism, for sure by the next tourism update, um, it'll be all done and we can present it then, kind of let you all know where we're planning on taking the, the organization and the tourism, um, section of it all. So that's kind of that with our strategic plan. Um, Tri-City Barbecue Fest, um, was September fifteenth and sixteenth that overall went great. Um, we had the most food vendors we ever had, um, the most barbecue teams we've ever had and the most entries to our car show. Um, constantly thinking of ways to expand and improve it. Um, for sure, we know we need a more electrical solutions and more seating. More seating's been our number one complaint, so we're going to start working on that early. Um, the crowds are about the same. Uh, Friday night, we saw about seven thousand people, or.
How do you tell them?
Um, we had a, um, I had a webinar with this company called Blazer dot A I. And it was kind of just a demo, but they filled me the numbers, uh, but we are looking at purchasing it, um, kind of with our Western Iowa Advantage um, regional group, maybe purchasing it as a whole and kind of sharing it, because it wasn't, it told me, um, just the demo had told me so many things that I wouldn't know, just, you can't just research.
So they estimate it based on like a screenshot of?
Um, on your phone, your cell phone. So it's tracking everyone that's there by your cell phone and it knows your cell phone, it took out all the data, if you already work uptown in that area, um, you weren't included in it.
So it's tracking the number of cell phones that are.
Basically, yep.
Basically, yep.
Yeah, so if you have your location on, it can track you.
Targeted marketing nowadays, it's called geo-fencing. So they can tell if, if you're at like thirty-two and you dental, like right away in the death, they could geo-fence that area and go, send them ads that say, hey.
send them ads that say, hey, try Broadway Dental.
Also, that's what, when I go to Phoenix.
So they can just, they can really hone in there in a matter of a half hour of getting all this information from the Phoenix area.
It's kinda scary. Yeah, not only is Drew our, uh, tourism coordinator person, he is a great also IT person.
Yeah, Ty knows, I was in the military for a while, so I did a lot of IT stuff. So I helped them on that aspect of it. We worked like website stuff. We revamped that and all that good stuff.
Um, but yeah, so seven thousand people Friday night, ten thousand people throughout the day on Friday, or on Saturday. Um, we, our sponsorships were just shy of seventy-five thousand dollars, which is amazing. I can't say it enough that we can't do it without our sponsorships and all the volunteers. We're probably gonna see final numbers in the positives, which is great. Um, when we see a positive number though, it's a way for us to continue to build the event and hopefully the event to become self-sustaining. All the Barbecue Fest money goes back to Barbecue Fest. Um, we have a separate account for it and it all just stays right there. Um, we're started planning for twenty twenty-four. Uh, the dates are, are set for September twentieth and twenty-first. Um, we've been approved by KCDS for the barbecue competition to be that day. Um, and then in the next few weeks, our committee will start looking at bands to book. So that's kind of all I have with Barbecue Fest. We don't really have any final numbers right now, still kind of getting built in.
Doesn't fall on.
It doesn't fall on cap show days.
And, and it's the cap show is what, hundred and twenty-fifth?
Yes.
I think it's great.
Yeah, and it'll be, um, barbecue, it'll be, uh, Barbecue Fest number ten. So we're hoping to do something a little special. We don't know what that is yet, but something that celebrates ten years of Barbecue Fest, so.
It's like you're in the planning stages of that. We've talked and that, uh, maybe get a little local competition started while you're in the planning stage. Looking with the Manila tractor pull, have a barbecue cook-off for local people there and have a winner move forward. Uh, treatment days, have them, a winner move forward. Or something, that's what I would like to see. You know, the Dell City Fund Days has their, well, Kelly Garrett just hosted a cook-off down there. Had a winner and bring them people forward to compete.
That might be a nice sponsor for you is, you know, a couple of the meat producers like Kelly or, you know, you got, uh, the grasses up there, rickets area, you know what I mean? That might be, you know, and you're starting to include our county people, you know what I mean? You know, and that's, I, I think it'd be just a, you know.
Yeah, um, cause I have, in early October, I reached out to one person, most of it was, um, uh, city clerks from each, um, each town in Crawford County. And hopefully we can have a meeting with someone from each town and kind of not only talk about their businesses and economic development, but also what are their, um, you know, annual events? What are their attractions? And kinda hopefully teach them to, like, when you have an event, this is how you submit it on our calendar. So then we can all kinda be on the same page. So hopefully by the end of the year, we kinda have met with everyone. Um, some have got back to me, some haven't, but.
I think you've done a better job with your events calendar and planning stuff too. I mean, I, I'd seen, boy, it's on Facebook, it catches you more now and maybe it's because I stop at your office too much.
It's tracking you.
But I just think that, uh, you know, some of that stuff would be, I guess, it'd just build that team building for the whole county instead of, you know. Everybody doing their, yeah, exactly. Excellent.
Um, Winter Snow Show, that's kind of our next event, December second. Um, planning's underway. We're hopefully releasing sponsorship information this week. Um, that's just, um, not too much more to say about that really right now. Uh, Country Travel Discoveries, um, that happened this fall. Uh, five tour buses came through, um, and they all stayed at Cobblestone and then also went to the Don Reed Theater and toured that. So hopefully we're, um, need to reach out back to them and, uh, maybe figure out some dates for twenty twenty-four. Cause from what I know, that it went well and they wanna bring their tours back here, which is awesome. Um, there was a Western Iowa Regional Tour Summit in Manning last week. Um, we got to tour Templeton Distillery. Uh, there was many, um, helpful speakers there, including the Iowa DOT, Iowa Alcohol and Beverage Association, the Rag Ride Director, Iowa PBS, Iowa Human Trafficking Division, and Neapolitan Labs, who I know does your guys' site. But, um, they're all very useful and, uh, hopefully we can bring, a lot of them are free resources. So hopefully I'd love to bring some of them back here and, um, do some, you know, um, try to utilize them to speak in our area.
How many samples of TR did you try?
Just two. That's all I could do.
Which number?
I don't even know. Whatever they gave me. Um, Business Appreciation Breakfast is tomorrow. And actually we have, um, our special guest speaker is, uh, the, our Travel Iowa Tourism Liaison, Stephanie Napple. So we're gonna be talking about tourism at the Business Appreciation Breakfast and kinda just how it impacts, um, the economy and basically why it's good for, um, businesses. Um, and then all of our staff is gonna meet with her after the breakfast to kinda get, I met with her once, but Drew and, uh, Paul caught up on kinda what Travel Iowa does and their resources and basically that they're, they're here to help us. So, um, we're gonna meet with her afterwards. And then, um, we've been communicating with other organizations and, uh, communities. Um, I don't know if you guys are, I'm sure you guys are aware of this, but, uh, the city of Dennison tonight is gonna vote whether, uh, to submit an application for Rag Ride to come through in, uh, twenty twenty-four. So, um, if we get accepted by Rag Ride, the CDC will be the lead of it. And that's kinda how it was the last time it came through. Um, so even if we don't get it this year, it shows them that we're, we want it to come here and maybe then the following year. So that's kind of on the, the maybe. And Don Reed Foundation, Paul is supposed to be talking to them actually this afternoon. Yeah, and kinda see what the heck's going on. I know Shani was kind of on him, uh, before she left. And, um, now Paul's gonna kinda, you know, come and be the new guy and hopefully, uh, we can get somewhere with them, but we'll see.
Prepare some bridges.
Yeah. Uptown Improvement Committee, still working with them, um, on their projects. Hot Summer Nights, that's, um, Taylor's events here in Dennison. Hopefully, working with her a little bit to see how the, the CDC tourism could, um, may not take over her event, but, um, help her with the event, just like in other communities. Uh, we wanna do that. That was kinda, and then my last point was, um, yeah, community reach outs. We really wanna, you know, get out there in each community and kinda just have them tell us what's going on. So, yeah, that's kind of where we're, where we're at.
Any of you got questions?
Thank you, thank you guys.
I don't know if I'm gonna be there in the morning, so.
That's all right.
I'll do my best to be there.
It's early.
Work, work stuff.
Yeah. Think you gotta do that.
Great, thank you guys very much. Have a good day.
Good luck, Drew. I go ahead, Fisher. I know you're gonna do a good job, even if you are Navy. See you, buddy.
See ya.
All right. Next up on the agenda is, uh, possible burn ban was already taken care of. Everybody heard that, it's been lifted noon today. So, uh, LMR face to purchase contract. Well, Duane, if you'd like to come up and have a seat and Mr. Miller, if you'd come with him.
This is late loss.
Good morning.
Bring a chair, bring a social.
Thank you, board, for time in your review this morning. I think you, uh, each have a copy of the, the contract. Um, as it's, it's, it's been updated. We had a, this initial review yesterday and there was a couple of requests and changes, uh, from an attorney.
Hi Kyle, county attorney myself and the Williams Inc., we're here, yes, and being the, the, the contract through their insurance, which is towards the end, has the insurance and then their licensing for the radius. Yeah, everything seemed to, we changed some stuff, Colin, I think I sent a few last night. Changed a few things.
So what we're gonna finish this is kind of?
Well, this is a, uh, Colin has had some concerns about bidding. Yeah, this is a continuation of our previous, uh, phase one, so this is phase two of the, of the project, which will finish out all the rest of the towers. Um, there was a little bit of language on, this shall or not, or maybe. I think there's some of those words that were two words without a space. Just little stuff. Colin was detailed. Little stuff, yeah.
Which is good, but we're out here.
Yep.
Yeah, those changes specifically, um, we added an assignment of a project manager. We didn't have that detailed in there, so that language is there. It doesn't specifically say the name of our project manager. We do have that selected.
It's a Raycom.
Yeah, it's, it's a Raycom employee, it's Michael Northness. Um, Mike has, has worked on this, many of their projects, so he will be assigned. But we did add that language in there, so, um, that, that's up, uh, in the initial, uh, it's an added section thirty-four. So, uh, good detail, uh, just by Colin. What was it, the board in, by Michael, Northness? Northness, okay, I guess, yeah. Like Lochness, only with a north. Yeah. And that language for the project manager does, uh, you know, it, it requires your approval. Uh, and if there's language in there that if, um, you know, the project manager's not working out, you can request to have a different project manager. So it's, it's completely at work, so. Okay?
That person lives around this area?
Yeah. Yep. It's our, our Ankeny office, uh, which includes, um, Tim's Inc., um, reports to our Ankeny office in terms of the service area. And so our Ankeny office will be, uh, facilitating the project, uh, should you approve it, uh, along with our engineering team. That's out of Marshatown and Ankeny and, and, uh, a large area, so, um, with approval, we'll be, we're having a lot of folks work on which are power sites. So we had that project manager, um, uh, in the recitals, uh, we, we added the language in there regarding this is a continuation of phase one. That, that phase one was bid and awarded. Uh, so this is really completing that phase one, we're calling this phase two. Uh, so that, uh, was language that Colin requested to be in there, uh, in terms of, uh, purchasing. Um, on page five, under, uh, section one, the definitions, uh, we added buyer. And so there was a definition for the seller, uh, which, which is Raycom. We had a definition for the buyer, which is proper counting. Uh, on page eight, we needed to add a space, uh, from the word damage and the word shall. It was just a, there, there, and spacing, and that was good. And on page sixteen, section twenty, uh, Colin asked about that paragraph. Colin, I'm gonna get a chance to do it.
I'm looking at it now.
Yeah, um, and I reread through that several times, Colin, and, uh, we put a pause, um, after the word otherwise and shall. It reads, or the seller and or the subs, suppliers are, are not liable for these certain things. Get these out. It kinda runs together in terms of its reading there.
Do you, do you guys have a performance bond then also?
Uh, we can't, it did require a performance bond.
Well, it says here, uh, performance bond. You should, that would be in here. We require one, if, if you're here.
Yeah, for that kind of party proof.
Usually you do have to have one.
There's a contractor, construction bond and a performance.
Performance bond. Kind of, it looks like we're requiring one, otherwise we should take that early.
Page your young.
I'm on page eleven.
Section twelve.
For that kind of money, usually make sure we have a, back a plan on getting it.
Yeah, we've had di- different counties that require it and or not require it, always fun, so I do apologize.
Well, it's in there.
It's in there. So if the county wishes to have that, um, I'll.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, that kinda, I mean.
Florida, December.
Normally it should be an insurance. Performance bond is in order. Says within ten business days of execution, this contract seller should provide buyer with the surety bond for performance set forth and activated through.
Yeah, that's just good business. Yep, sure, sure you want for performance for that.
That was the only thing I thought about me. I hadn't had the chance to review it. You, the first of, had to look at it. You guys did it yesterday, that's one thing I noticed.
I was in for the years yesterday, did you do diligence, not you?
Yep.
I had sent Colin over to Colin that room. Colin did it. Play with.
Is, uh, is this cover, I guess that's on you, is this cover all of the equipment or?
This is, this will be the transmitter?
Everything that is.
Yeah, yeah.
Microwaves.
On the X, exhibit A quotation of what, what picture is that? It's towards the back, they have about maybe three quarters of the way.
They set a team?
You might be right. But, uh.
Yeah, the towers, the shelters, the generators, all of that, uh, was referred to normally as civils. Uh, you, the county, uh, have hired and that's, uh, is installed. Um, and so this is all the electronic equipment.
Okay.
So it's the microwave, um, that will connect to your existing three sites. So this adds four sites of equipment. Um, so we'll have a total of seven sites. That was the original plan for your countywide system. Um, so this adds, uh, the microwave equipment to connect those existing three sites in what we call a loop or a ring. Uh, the technology allows it to be a kind of a fail-safe network in case one segment were to go down. The traffic can be rerouted so that no site's off the air. Uh, so that microwave does complete that. Uh, this includes the, uh, the equipment down in the shelter in terms of the transmitting and receiving equipment. Uh, the timing equipment in terms of GPS timing, uh, the networking equipment, uh, that brings all that microwave and ties it together. Uh, the backup power equipment, UPSs, uh, that are there to take the power switch for you, for generator testing or power outages initially. Uh, the installation of everything on, uh, the towers and in the shelters, it, it completes your system. Okay. All the way to, uh, testing and, uh, and bringing it online for you.
So how close was the final bid, I guess, to what was like the original bid? Is that kind of where we're, that's what?
It's been five years.
How far are you going back, the Turkleton report? That was nine million, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't have that, I don't have a figure from back then. I could probably try to look up some numbers.
I was just.
What was projected, yeah.
I guess, since it's been five years since we've been able to do anything. It's like it's, it's, I would say the minimum of five hundred thousand, as you think.
It was May of two thousand seventeen.
That'd be, that'd be a fair guess, I think.
Yep.
I give three days.
The good thing is we, it seems like we see light at the end of the tunnel when we're getting closer.
Is there a phase three?
No. For, for phase, phase three, uh, in terms of the system and its performance and, and its functionality, I, I would say no. This completes, uh, your initial request. Uh, in terms of, you do have some equipment now that's, uh, six going on, seven years old at your existing three sites, like the microwave equipment that's there. Um, you know, now, now another company has bought that company, so it's within it. We can get some parts, but that, that equipment is actually no longer manufactured. So, um, we, we would, we would advise to the board that, you know, we would provide a cost to you for that, updated that equipment. And you can look at that in, in a future, um, you know, um.
I guess phase three would be just.
Updated, updated any equipment that's, you know, gonna be working on getting.
No, Duane expressed to us yesterday that, uh, life expectancy on these sets of microwaves.
Ten years, yeah, ten years is very normal, uh, that you should.
Big round white dish that sits up on top of these. We've got three of them that are, that are aging, they're over five years old. He doesn't make them anymore.
But you got towers.
One at the ti- one at the time. You know?
As towers are talking to each other, and I talk with two microwave dishes that are facing each other, talking, communicating together. They need to be updated at the same time.
Yes, so it's both ends of a, what I call a link. Um, so from here, from this monopole out to the fire temper. Now there's a set of equipment, uh, and the fire tower out to slush wave.
There's another.
There's another set of equipment. Um, so that, that's the equipment that, um, you know, from your future budget considerations, you know, we would advise that we'll, we'll provide a cost for that update and, and, uh, the board can see to it or look at it and consider it for a budget.
That would come out of my budget. However, we decide to fund that budget, I think that there's some options coming up for state violence. You guys are being me, we supervise it.
Yeah.
Somebody has to be.
You're welcome.
So I keep rereading twenty B. I want to like your.
Okay. Yep. That's what, that's what you're hired for.
And. Twenty B. Now, I, I feel like additional language in lowercase helps clarify the capital part. But I still think the capital part reads the same to me that it read yesterday. But I still think the capital part reads the same to me that it read yesterday. And here's how it reads to me, I'm gonna take out some words because there's a lot of examples given in. So except as otherwise expressed, least specified in this contract. And then whether all these things, shall seller be liable for damages, and then it lists all the damages. Is, so twenty B is a paragraph protecting. The seller, it's limiting the liability of Raycom, right? Because even though the clarifying language in the bottom helps, say this will, the foreboding shall not apply to sellers' gentrification. Sales obligations, reckless misconduct, and death and bodily injury. I still feel like the capitalized portion of that sets up a conditional. If all these things happen. I don't see the then part of the conditional. You know, if, it sets up all these, if this is the situation. Typically, you set up all these if situations, you say then, then all, then this will be the outcome. And all I see is a bunch of ifs. Without a then.
Would you like to type one up and send it to?
Well, I just want to know the intent of the paragraph, is it, if it's to limit the liability of Raycom. It would make sense to me to read something like this, if the intent of that paragraph is a liability limitation for Raycom. Except as otherwise specified in this contract. Whether a result of breach of contract, port, warranty, strict liability, shall the seller. Raycom or even subcontractors be liable for any special damages, including all these list of damages. Then, what, what happens? What happens if the seller is held liable? Doesn't say what'll happen.
You'd like to make this, then they are subject to one hundred percent of the cost.
Like, I think there's an, I think the paragraph is intended to protect Raycom. I mean, it's in the limited liability section. Except provided in this contract, whether the result of anything, shall the seller be liable for damages? And then it just kind of stops. What happens if the seller is held, is found liable for damages? They, their liability shall be capped, their liability should be. Indemnified by the county, their liability shall be deferred out to. Somebody else. They should, their liability is a hundred percent on them. I mean, I mean, if I'm reading this wrong, it just reads to me, there's all these conditionals. And nothing that explains what happens if the conditions are met.
I, I read it as Colin, as the, this, the sellers, subcontractors, supplier, they're not going to be liable.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the intent of it, but it doesn't say that.
Like a lot of double talk to me.
Yeah, Colin, if the board would wish, and or Colin, perhaps we could work on, you know, different language there. And have that, have you approve that and us review it, and then we could even put that into the contract. And have the board review it.
Yeah, I guess if our, if our attorney's got. A little reservation, they don't want to move forward until.
Yeah, when I, I agree with you, I think that paragraph is meant to protect. Raycom. I just don't see the language that does that. It sets up all the ways that it wouldn't be liable if this is met, if it's liable, these are all these damages are listed. I mean, to just condense it out, I mean, it's, except in this contract. Shall seller be held liable for damages? And then it just drops.
I think it'd be good if maybe you guys could work out a paragraph that. That is fitting, cleaned up.
And because it is a liability section of this contract, I mean, if. If it should ever have to be enacted or leaned upon, it would be an important thing to be.
I think we could let them guys figure that wording out, so we could move forward.
So no action needs to be taken until they work that out.
Is that your only paragraph, I mean, do the, that's your biggest question?
Next week's agenda?
Yeah, any other questions from the board that we can? No, I can appreciate that.
That one is, I read it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not in Colin's shoes, so I can appreciate his review. And wanting to make sure that for the board and for the county.
So we'll bring this back on. Well, we need a check for two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in Mexico.
We could come prepared with an invoice, if, should you wish, and then.
Why don't you send it to me and I'll, I'll look at the sign and.
It would just be contentious on you, your board approval and.
Colin, thank you all. Okay, discuss, take action, tax abatement, one, 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 five, one hundred and eighty the streets, West Wigger, Anthony Segabart, two homes.
So we have another. Tax abatement application, it's a rural dwelling, building on an egg parcel. We've got their building permit, we went and looked at it prior to them starting construction. And I guess everything's in order, we would recommend accepting it three year, hundred percent. That's what I was just. They're talking three hundred, so it's not a real big house, it's about a fifteen hundred square foot with three car garage, so.
I remember we approved a three year, hundred percent tax abatement for address one, 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 five, hundred and eighty the street in Southwest, Iowa.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Mr. Dozart, decided by Ms. Hayden, to accept the tax bait one hundred percent for three years. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor states so by saying aye. Posse no, chair of both sides, hearings. Ours are only in rural, unincorporated areas. Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate you, always like doing those for new houses. Citizens input.
Mister Chairman. Can I bring up, read back to the burn man restriction, I just got a text message from someone, fire chief said they have no idea why that's being of did.
I text Greg on that text. Greg said that he sent out a survey, and nobody responded.
Nobody responded, oh, okay.
So Greg was under the progression that. Any issue.
Which, it's fine, I accept that.
Communication, I guess. They didn't raise any awareness when he asked.
Okay, well, I can, I can accept that as legitimate reason why we might have to rescind it, but. Obviously, like, now we're getting screened back because we rescinded it. So do we unrescinded or leave it in place? We're getting Peter ready from the fire chief saying they didn't want the burn man lifted, so do we unrescinded or not, leave it in place or? Well, he's the one.
He's the only one that's taxed.
But he's speaking for.
We sent out a thing over the weekend, and not a soul, not a soul responded.
In your opinion? You think it's fine having it rescinded?
The ground is wet now, but of course.
Dwayne, your personal opinion?
I mean, certainly, since we put it in place, we've gotten substantial amount of rainfall compared to rainfall we've had throughout the year, we had a lot of. A lot of crops.
There you go, I, I mean, we can put it on.
A lot of crops have been harvested, so there's not as much.
I could drive all you crazy if we have to, call an emergency meeting, otherwise we'll make sure on the next Tuesday, if it. On a Tuesday coming up after, if it's too dry and.
I do think we'll talk in more rain next week.
There's a chance rain tomorrow morning. And next Tuesday. Place had a lot of crops, you know, one that went into place, there hadn't been hardly, we hadn't turned yet, and there was a lot of crops that were sure and dry at the time. It wasn't really good, you know, there hasn't been. People abide by it, I think.
And the only fires were accidental.
Mine aren't. Well managed or.
Actually, I had a, you know, several calls asking why, and they, but they didn't, so I mean, I think everybody was abiding by.
You always have the pests, hate to say that.
But I mean, the guy that.
When you're told not to go out because it's snowing, what do you do, go out because it's snowing? We told not to burn, what do you want to do, burn?
But that's, yeah, I mean, the only ones I had, like that one outfit that was doing the walk and paddle, drive, ride and pass, they left there.
They're, they're babysat with a truck that's got water, that's totally different.
Well, that's, that was one of the issues that I had, it was, some people were calling, calling the chiefs and asking, and thought they didn't have a big deal there and. How come the chiefs weren't giving them, and I said, I can't speak for that chief, but they have the authority to yea or nay, you know.
Long story short, we can always put it back on, you know, pretty quickly.
All right, revisited, all right.
Yep, leave it as it is, I agree. Okay, thanks, thanks, Colin. Citizens input, you stood up Dave.
Yeah, just to give you an update on some stuff, it's all. The water grates. Patched, I guess would be the best way to say it, over at the city center, so that they can power wash, get some painting done hopefully and stuff. Before the way gets too crapping and stuff. Still have some leaks, but they've either been bypassed or. Water shut off to them because there's traps that are still frozen, and we won't know until we're in there and using things and stuff. As to how much damage is still there, yeah, I know we have at least one pipe in the south, southeast corner. And stuff that's got a leak and then that trap is leaking, and then we got another trap in a. Below the sink over in the bathroom upstairs in the southwest corner.
Are you doing that? You, you're gonna do that replacement of those traps, are you doing that?
No, no, we'll have to license plumber. Yeah, Topson's one we've been dealing with so far, we still have to bypass around the IT room and stuff to get water where we need it. Stuff upstairs, but stuff is working, but we had to, we fixed three leaks. And stuff over there from frozen stuff and multiple ones to do yet and stuff, like I said, we won't know until we're.
How much of that downstairs can just be capped off, because, I mean, hypothetically, other than the bathroom down there?
Sink in that break.
Well, then there's like a washroom.
Yeah, but I mean, we're not gonna need all them individual, we're in the dental offices and all, and their own water and stuff.
Absolutely not.
And I don't know how much of that is tied in with upstairs, two or not, you know, and everything and stuff, so. Probably wouldn't be the worst idea to bypass some of that, because who knows what kind of shake that sand either. So, okay, and then as far as our closet downstairs, Jennings is here doing tile and stuff. In the bathrooms, and he's gonna look at what we have left over for marble and stuff, and he's gonna give us, he's gonna send a tag and. Give him your email, Terry, so they're gonna get something put together, he's gotta look and see what we've got for materials and what it's gonna take to make that. Closet look. Yeah, to put the marble and everything back up and stuff.
What's currently in the floor of the closet?
What's that?
What's currently, what's the wall?
It's the wall.
That little piece right underneath stairs.
Wayne's coating of marble that we have downstairs.
So hopefully we have. I had talked to him, and he said some are possibly being able to flip the steps, so instead of having our. Concave steps. But after he got to looking at it and stuff, because I asked him if he'd done any more thinking about it, and he said, yeah, he said, well, with the steel risers, he says. Chances are it would break every step when they went to take it apart, because of the way they have to attach with steel or whatever. He said, yeah, and that's just it, because we thought, oh, here's an alternative, we can flip it, and they'd look nice, you know, for another hundred and thirty years, you know. Or something, but he said it. So, but, we're talking, they're working on the thing right now, they could get it done if you want to wait a little bit.
On the. Yeah, I mean.
The check is due ten days after signing, so.
Yeah, we can. The consensus is there, so. We're still, we're still working on business, so.
That's all the updates I've got.
Winter wise, you need anything special or?
And so she's gonna be gone for twelve weeks.
Do we need to get that in line like we can?
I'll get a hold of Chad and see if he's available.
And we, we probably don't take a break in between her for when she's back, and then when I, because I get two new knees next year, probably.
Depends on the timing of all that?
Yeah, well, we might have like roughly a month or a little over in between.
Winter long, and then we'll just go from there, and that time was as needed, right? So we just fight them all winter as needed, I mean, that should be just fine, right? Because knees, I've seen people get new knees on the next day during the marathon, so you shouldn't be able to come in stupid.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just plop you on the tractor and.
So we're gonna start packing down all this stuff, we, we, we're just in here, it shouldn't go flying. Safety meeting, and that, nobody gets.
No more all original parts.
No, it's actually hips are easier than knees.
I just had a girlfriend have her hip done and she was.
I know, knee is probably the big, they say knees is the hardest joint. I'm not real impressed with shoulder work.
Bone on bone, yep, no cartilage.
I don't know why they can't come in when you're like thirty-five, put a grease shirt in there.
Invent that, Kyle.
You squirt some bacon grease in there, hell, that'll loop it right.
Had a dog in the towels out there trying to chew on the knee.
Get shots of the ground up chicken comb.
So, anyway, that's the updates on this.
I went over there the other morning and looked in, was it Monday?
Well, it's looking nice.
Boy, I'll tell you what, lights are gonna be nice.
I was anxious to see what was.
Yeah, the tile looks nice, they're doing a very nice job, they're going as far as they can until we get the door jams.
That's gonna really be nice, that's gonna be nice.
And it's surprising. How the, what they're putting up looks like a lot of the stuff around the elevator. It doesn't necessarily look like the wall that's there before you go down the hall. But I got looking today, it's like, God, that looks a lot like our marble around the.
Yeah.
Elevator.
Yeah, I want to.
Yeah.
Does it take a piece of plywood off?
And then.
Does it take a piece of plywood off for you to look at it, or how, you have to go in the other door?
No, well, instead of going on the side, the plastic is on the other side, you need to step over, there's just a little mini barricade and a chair there, because they have to be walked through, they, they said that the sheriff's.
I'm a joker.
Walk through there.
See, I haven't even tried to look in.
No, I haven't either.
Or you.
The door's all right.
Most of the doors unlocked.
Alright.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's coming along, and, and that's why I was telling the guy in advance, at least now you can see progression and stuff.
I'll take the.
Hey, well, I'm nosy, I've got to keep peeking at them, I've been peeking.
I have not, I've been just waiting.
I haven't, I haven't.
There's a picket crew out in the parking lot, I always got to wander up there just to see what they're up to.
Yeah, but stay in a way. Construction site.
Oh, yeah, is there anybody out in Zoomland have anything to bring forward for citizens input? Kim's still on there, she might just be responding to Cindy.
I had.
I don't know who iPad is, MJ, Michael Jordan's, all right. Patty. She's keeping a eye on you. All right.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, you got to do whatever their steam section, of course.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Get that paperwork.
Five minute break.
Yeah, I think that's a good chance for everybody to relieve any pressure pressures they have, or relieve coffee, coffee pressure. Alright, well, reconvene in a five minutes. Five or ten minutes.
Let's go look, let's go look, we're going to go.
You're going to go peek it? See that, we, we stimulated your, your curiosity. It does look good.
Yeah. Looks really good.
It'd be nice.
I looked at your art this morning, I was, you know, the.